Call a meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda if there's no changes or additions. Counselor Cutler. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Minutes from September 22nd, 2025. Questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2025.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer that the regular meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Delegations.
Abe?
Sergeant Pelche is here with the RCMP Q1 report for 2025.
Okay, thank you Abe. Distinguished counsel, guests, fellow presenters, delegates. We'll start off with the Q1 report, which is from April 1 through June 30th. Q2 is almost coming out here shortly, probably by the end of this month or early next, so I'll be back in probably pretty quick than the last time. I have to apologize for missing the last meeting on the 22nd of September due to illness. I'm still a bit of a puddle over here, but bear with me. If I start coughing or hacking, yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay. We'll start off with the covering letter that was sent out, primarily deals with the new commanding officer for the division, Trevor Duro. It just goes on to talk about his background and what his, what his goals are for, for the division, what I'd like to see done, easier said than done too, in a lot of cases. Moving on to the statistics for the first quarter, 25, 26 fiscal year. We had 49 reports of speeding offenses, which result in a 36 charges being laid. Three reports of distracted driving received, so two charges were laid as a result of those. And distracted driving, I'm talking cell phones primarily, and anything like that's going to take your eyes off the road. For crime reduction, we roughly, last quarter, we roughly had told people in various police enforceable conditions, whether it be curfew checks, which is primarily the big one, no contacts, no goes, those sort of things, the stuff that we can actually enforce. We've conducted 30 checks on these individuals randomly, and only actually two ended up on a fail to comply charge, and I think there are two people on conditions that had no contact with each other that were found to be in contact with each other. So, everybody else is pretty much compliant, found compliant. The persons on these conditions varies monthly, varies monthly. As terms are completed, court appearances are done, and then new people come on and go on to these conditions. So it's, it's a fluctuating thing that happens. We currently have, we had 11 persons on warrant status, which almost fluctuates weekly. We have a warrant apprehension team that does come in from time to time to do a warrant sweep, and I think the last time they were only successful in finding one individual. A lot of people leave town, they know they're wanted, so they'll try to lay low. Public police, community police relations. I submitted 25 media releases this, this quarter, submitted to the local media, of course. A lot of these originated from media relation, or media relations officer of Edmonton, and pertaining to current crime trends, also safety tips for summer, boating, driving, traveling, whatever it might be. And I tried to focus in on the ones that are most prevalent for, for the Claris Home area, and had those submitted. Not all of them really pertained, or it's such a low level that is virtually, it's kind of a waste of time submitting it because it's an odd event down here. Monthly police reports are still being submitted. I don't know how many people read the paper. I try to submit those monthly as to what we've been up to the previous month. A lot of times I am delayed on that because a lot of times the file will be changed. The scoring, if I could say that, maybe it was a B and E, but it's not, it actually was a mischief. But we will maybe know that until quite a ways down the road. So I want to try to be as accurate as possible when I submit those reports. We've facilitated school requests, primarily to the Hutterwick Colonies, a bike safety event was conducted, well as the presentation, and of course, Red Search for Canada Day. We are pretty much on track for, for these objectives considering the resources issues that we've been facing, but I'll get into that here in a bit. During that first quarter, we also had only two files or two complaints resulting in the Controlled Drugs and Substances Act, suspicious drug activity, if I could say, but again, they came in through Crime Stoppers, so there's really not much we can follow up on. We can't contact these people, of course, they're anonymous. We'll look into it, we'll try to see if it's conducive to the drug activity they may be describing, but it's per day to do that in a marked police car. And it's one incident per, say, per person. It's not like a whole bunch of, intel is coming in on one individual, then that will warrant maybe a further response from up and out of injury, when our SAG crew comes We are working with two constables, one corporal and myself, for most of the first quarter, actually the whole first quarter, up until September 14th, when one of my long-term off members who was off on a pat leave actually came back. So we have him back as of the 14th. But we're still down two members, and the return of them members is highly unlikely, and that's my opinion. We have no idea what's happening. So, we still have those two on strength, so we cannot get new resources in until they're, they go into medical or they go, or they, or they leave. Staffing will fill those spots.
So are those those soft vacancies that they like to talk about?
Yeah. Pat leave, mat leave, long-term mode, yes, those are considered all soft vacancies. Yeah. So that's where we're sitting. Okay, can't think of pretty much elaborator on all that. Just some crime stats here real quick. For Claris Home, when I say Claris Home, I mean the whole jurisdiction that we look after, the town of Claris Home, Staveley, Willow Creek, and part of the MD of Ranchlands. For the first quarter last year, 2024, April 1 to 2024, June 30th, Claris Some detachment, excuse me, fielded 726 reports or complaints. 671 of them deemed actual, other ones deemed unfounded, meaning they reported, but they never happened, resulting in, yeah, 671 files or investigations during that point, same time last year as first quarter. 298 of those files are still in investigation, and 59 charges were laid as a result. Once again, for Claris Home from 2025, April 1 to 2025, June 30th, 799 reports came in, 760 actual investigations, 292 of those files are still in investigation as of when I printed this off, and 135 charges being laid. So that's just between the quarter of last year and the quarter of this year. But that's for the whole entire area. Now, for just the, the town of Claris Home, from 2024, 493 files, 459 actual, 225 still not cleared yet, ongoing, 27 charges laid, that's from last year. And this year, in the same time period, excuse me, 508 files, 484 actual, 199 still ongoing, and 56 charges for various offenses. Any questions, concerns, comments? Did I omit something?
On those files opened, is, are them up or down, or about the same?
Give or take, they're pretty, pretty close. Like the next year could be a little bit higher, could be a little bit lower, but over the long term, it's, yeah.
Okay.
No big serious offenses at all. And some of these that are open, they could be CPIC files too, I mean, people on conditions or warrants or anything along those lines, property that's been stolen, we've added, so that includes all that as well. Not just investigations, but investigations are done, but the CPIC files, if I could say, are still, are still active.
Okay.
One other thing about resourcing, it looks like my, I'm not getting a new building anytime soon, I think the premier quashed that. So, we're going to see what we can do with the, the current structure that we have. See what we can.
Counselor Ross?
My question is, do you see the youth getting into more, or same?
Youth?
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same.
Is it?
We've had, I can't, of course, really elaborate on too much of it, but we've had some, you know, serious youth files, say, sexual assaults, but not the way you're thinking, but inappropriate touching, or that sort of thing, groping.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if I can maybe Google about on that, but that, that's only been one or two, I think, in the last, last, quite a while.
Do you find the drug scene has gone down, or it's the same, or?
No. Like I said before, drugs is a problem in pretty much every community. We here, here in Claris Home, don't really hear a lot, a lot about it, and it's an intelligence-based, to combat it, we need the intelligence, we need the community to step forward, we need people to come forward, either through Crime Stoppers, but it has to be more than just one, because it's kind of hard to, you know, substantiate, is this actually going on, or is this person just upset with somebody? Like, we don't really know.
Thank you.
But yeah, it's not. We haven't had any overdose deaths, nobody's had to administer Narcan in anybody here in town, that I know of, like, well, my members haven't. So, we haven't had any, any overdose deaths in the area, and I'm hoping it just stays that way.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Feel better.
Yeah, get better.
It's a long process, but it's getting there. But thank you very much.
No, we got another delegation, got to sit in your seat, which...
Things we want to talk about, you can't hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Have a good one.
Did I do that?
Yeah, you did. Next, Abe?
We have representatives from the museum board here, and not sure who the, not sure who the spokesperson is. So, Barry Gibb, and...
Jordan.
Jordan, thank you. Wow. You can bug me about that one.
Because you changed your hair, right?
That's gotta be it.
Sure. Don't let it slide.
Sorry, sorry, Jordan.
You guys just have to turn on this little person.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jordan Wallace, and this is Barry Gibb. I'm the interim executive director over at the museum. And on behalf of everyone at the Claris Home and District Museum, I want to extend a heartfelt thanks for the continued support that you guys have showed us. Especially over the past year, we've had a fantastic season this year, we had great community engagement, enthusiastic visitors, and wonderful partnerships. This year, we introduced two new events to the calendar, and we exceeded our targets for gate donations, gift shop sales, bus tours, and visitor count. And that's an achievement that we're all incredibly proud of, as you can see. We'll be back in January with our full year-end report, but with the upcoming election, we just wanted to take a quick moment to express our gratitude to you all. So, to all members of council, thank you, your presence at our events, and your encouragement, your backing, it's all meant so much, and it really makes a difference when our community leaders show up and stand with us, and we see that difference. Above all, the biggest thank you goes to your unanimous approval for last November's approval to use town land for construction of the new museum building. That was a landmark decision for us, and we're deeply grateful for your vision and for your trust. You've given us the opportunity to grow, to better serve the public, and to secure a future for the museum for generations to come. It's truly been a pleasure working alongside each of you as we continue to celebrate and preserve the rich history of our town. And to those of you running for reelection, we wish you the best of luck. To those of you who are not seeking another term, enjoy your well-earned peace and quiet, hopefully.
Will do.
With that, I'll turn it over to Barry Gibb, the Chair of our Board of Directors for the museum, and he'll share a brief update on our fundraising efforts. As you know, the Board of Directors and the Friends of the Museum have committed to raising the funds for this exciting new chapter, and we're really eager to show you the momentum that's already building. So, with that, here's Barry.
Okay, thank you. As we said when we made the presentation and you approved the use of the land, we were committed to doing the fundraising for this building. And so, we estimated the cost of the building at $400,000 for Phase 1, which is basically to construct the building, not to finish it on the inside. So, we figured we needed to raise about $100,000 from the community, then to enable us to get all the grants that we would need to build the building. So, and that's what we've, our focus this year has been on, on fundraising for the new building. In August, we were approached by the Community Foundation of Lethbridge in Southwestern Alberta, that they had a donor who wished to match donations that we raised. So any donations we raised from private individuals, they would match up to $50,000. So that really kick-started our sort of fundraising campaign, and so, that, we had a deadline, they put a deadline on it December 31st, so we started towards the end of August. So in the, the past eight weeks, we've raised $60,000. So we have, and we believe that in that, we have $50,000 that will meet the matching requirements. So that will get us our $100,000. So that's been a huge accomplishment. I don't think that too many people know that we've, we've reached that goal, just in the last week or so. I think that we have to submit and make sure we get that money, so we're not, you never know until you've got it, but we think, we think we're there, we think we've got the, we'll meet the criteria. There's, I think we've had three reasons for, for success, because it's basically been eight weeks since we really started heavy-duty fundraising. We've had really strong support from the community. I would have to say it's probably surprised us even how much support we've had. When your fundraising campaign kicks off with a $12,500 donation, which automatically doubles to $25,000, that really starts you off with a bang, and that was really significant. The other factor, one other factor, there was three I had. One was, the other one was the coverage in the local press. We get extremely good coverage for the museum. We were front page, I think, three weeks in a row in August, so we can't, we can't get any better than that. And I think the other one is just the collaboration and the hard work that's going on between the three partners with the museum staff, the museum board, and the Friends of the Museum Society. We work together, we're, we, we hope that everybody sees us as one, but it's three different groups of people. And the fundraising was, been a lot of work by the volunteers, and two of them in particular have raised the bulk of the funds. They're both here tonight, they don't know I'm going to say this. Tom Carey and Earl Taylor have both done a lot of work. Huge amount. Huge amount of work in terms of going door-to-door. Little did we know that we had two farm machine, former farm machinery salesmen on our, involved in our organization, and they're not afraid to go talk to people and tell them the story and ask for, for a donation. So, we're in a really good spot right now. Our goal for 2025 was fundraising, 2026 is grant writing, and then in 27, given that we get all the grants we want, we'll be able to tender the, the project and hopefully start construction either that year or '28. So, we're on track so far. That was really what I wanted to leave you folks with, and to thank you very much for your support, and we're going to do it for sure, I know we're going to do it.
Perfect.
If anybody has any questions for us?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, no questions, but of course, congratulations, and you guys are such an excellent team to work with. It just, you guys are so devoted, and the museum wouldn't be successful without you, so, good on you.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of people here, from both the Friends of the Museum and the Board is here as well, tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. It's amazing to see what's happening at the museum. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bylaw 1815, borrowing bylaw solar project. Abe?
So, the bylaw 1815 is on the agenda for second and third readings. Council passed first reading on September 8th, and this is to approve borrowing funds for the solar project in the amount of $272,966. Municipalities are required to send notifications whenever they are doing a borrow, borrowing, give the public a chance to contest, contest the project or the borrowing. So we did notify the public in the paper, did not get any comments back, and so, that period, allowing the public to contest and petition, actually, the bylaw is, is closed. So, bylaws is here for second and third reading.
Discussion?
I'll make the motion for second reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to give bylaw number 1815, the Arena Solar Project Borrowing Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Motion for third reading. Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1815, the Arena Solar Project Borrowing Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Bylaw 1816, Property Taxation Exemption for Community Organizations. Abe?
So, bylaw 1816 is on the agenda for second and third readings as well, and this is the property tax exemption for community organizations. This was mostly an administrative update to align with new legislation around the COPTER, is the abbreviation, the COPTER program, pardon me. So, we have made some updates to the bylaw, primarily the schedule. Yeah, on the agenda for second and third readings again.
Questions, discussion? Can I have the motion for second reading, please? Counselor Kettles, question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1816, the Property Taxation Exemption for Community Organizations Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Third reading, please. Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1816, the Property Taxation Exemption for Community Organizations Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Bylaw 1817, Records Management Amendment.
So, we have bylaw on the agenda tonight for, we're asking for three readings. We heard back from the province regarding our peace officer application, and there were a few changes that they asked us to make, so we've got some policy changes that we'd like to pass after, or approve, council to approve, after the, the bylaw receives its readings. Very minor changes to the policies and to the bylaw. We have it highlighted here, it's the, it's the records, records retention, records management and retention bylaw. And, pardon me, two changes, just new legislation regarding how long we retain multimedia records, for five years, up from three years, I believe, and provincial offenses and tickets, again, at five years, up from three years, is what it said in the old schedule. So we're making that change to align with legislative requirements, because it is so minor, and because we've had this application out for a long time, that's why we're looking for three readings from council tonight.
Yeah, it's basic housekeeping, I'll move first reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1817, the Records Management and Retention Bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Counselor Kettles makes...
Second reading, please.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1817, the Records Management and Retention Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Third reading? Oh, unanimous consent.
motion first.
Make that motion?
Counselor Meister, question?
Moved by Counselor Meister for unanimous consent to give bylaw number 1817, the Records Management and Retention Bylaw, third and final reading at the same meeting.
All in favor? Approved.
And now we need third reading.
Third and final reading. Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1817, Records Management and Retention Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Other government correspond...
I'll make a motion to adopt policy 5.3.25.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to adopt policy number 5.3.25, the CPO Use of Force Policy Version 2, effective October 24th, 2025, as presented. Wait a minute. October 14th, I do not know why the motion says the 24th, I apologize. Effective October 14th, 2025, as presented.
All in favor?
I'll move 5.3.04. Notebooks, yes.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to adopt policy number 5.3.30, the CPO Complaint Process Policy. Sorry, you're doing notebook policy or the process policy?
Notebook.
Okay. To adopt policy number 5.3.04, the notebook policy, version 1.2, effective October 14th, 2025, as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Approved. Councillor Cutler?
I'll go back and do five point three zero.
Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to adopt policy number five point three point three zero, the CPO Complaint Process Policy, version one point two, effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Five point three?
No, I think we got them.
Did we? Okay. Moving on. Other government correspondence, municipal district of Willow Creek, Abe?
So, this is an invitation from the MD of Willow Creek, they're doing their annual legacy of the land, legacy of our land banquet. And they're offering a complimentary ticket to council. That event happens November seventh, twenty twenty-five, at the Fort McLeod District Community Hall. So, doors open at five, prime rib dinner to follow at six.
Comments, questions? Can we say yes? Well, go ahead, councillor Zimmer.
I was thinking, 'cause we have till the thirty-first to reply. We don't have to reply tonight, do we?
No.
Yeah. Just 'cause if I wanted to go, who knows if I'm here come then.
Perfect.
We can just say yes, and we can decide who's going to attend later.
Decides. Local correspondence, forty-second annual Fort McLeod Santa Claus Parade, Abe?
So, there's some fundraising going on for the Santa Claus Parade, and an invitation to, to join the parade as well. Council normally sends the float every year, the Clarisom float. I don't believe we normally sponsor, or council normally sponsors the parade. Don't think so?
No.
Questions, discussion? Take for information? Six point two, Royal Canadian Legion Branch number forty-one, Abe?
So, Legion has invited the mayor or representative to receive the first poppy Friday, October thirtieth, thirty-first, sorry? Thirty-first. At the Legion, at eleven AM, so I think we'll just make a note after the election to, to attend that, someone from council, mayor or someone from council. Okay.
Okay, six point three, Royal Canadian Legion Branch number forty-one, Abe?
So, another invitation from the Legion, and this one is for the wreath presentation. To lay a wreath on behalf of council for Remembrance Day, that's November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty at the community center. I think we'll just have to do the same thing for this one to council, just respond that, we'll reach out to council after the election and, and find out who's, can attend, and then just respond at that time.
Perfect. Six point four, Stephen Frank P. Tech, formal request for review of water metering bylaw and associated revenue practices, Abe?
So, we have a request from a resident to review the, the sewer and utility bylaw. There's some specific, several concerns that they've highlighted in this correspondence. I can review those concerns with the council. And then, turn it over to you to provide direction. But the concerns, number one, disproportionate rev, revenue generation, so, I'll just read from the, directly from the letter. The municipality has reported generated significantly more revenue from water billing than projected, with surplus funds being transferred to discretionary reserves. This raises questions about the financial intent and transparency of the program, particularly when the stated goal was conservation rather than revenue generation. Another concern is lack of conservation impact. Despite the implementation of metering, there is no measurable reduction in water consumption. This undermines the rationale for the program and suggests that its primary effect has been financial rather than environmental. Conflict with provincial legislation, the Alberta Water Act prioritizes conservation, stewardship, and equitable access to water. The use of water meeting, water metering as a revenue tool may be inconsistent with these principles, specifically, section two, section eighteen, and section fifty-one. And those sections respectively deal with promoting conservation, licensing for water use, and statutory exemption of twelve hundred and fifty cubic meters per year for household use from private sources. Number four, residential versus revenue generating use, the Water Act distinguishes between household use and commercial use. Properties generating income, such as rental units, may be subject to different regulatory treatment. However, for owner-occupied primary residents with no business licensing or commercial activity, water use is protected, is a protected household right, not taxable commodity. Public disclosure. Sorry, hierarchy of water allocation properties, the Water Act establishes a priority system for water access. Household use, agriculture use, municipal use, commercial use, and recreational use, in that order. The hierarchy confirms that household use is the most protected category in any municipal policy that undermines this principle should be carefully scrutinized. Public disclosure by the mayor, comments about, comments from a coffee with council about communities that were considering implementing water metering. So, concerned about some comments there at coffee with council. Access to private residences, the current language in the bylaw granting the town authority to enter private residences for water meeting, metering maintenance rises serious concerns. Under section five four two of Alberta's Municipal Water Act, entry into private property must be reasonable, justified, and preceded by notice, except in emergencies. Given the water meters are located inside the home, this access should be governed by contractual consent, not assumed by bylaw. And then, proposal for household, household water billing exemption. Given our community's rural character and agricultural identity, I respectfully propose that council consider amending the water metering bylaw to include a basic household water exemption aligned with Alberta Water Act's statutory standard. So, looking for a twelve hundred and fifty cubic meter per residence water allowance per year. And then sewage charges based on water consumption. Additionally, residents are not only billed for the number of cubic meters of water consumed, but also charged for wastewater services based on fifty percent of that consumption. Regardless of whether the water actually enters the sewer system, in the rural communities like ours where outdoor water use is common, and much of it is absorbed in the ground or used for non-sewer purposes, this billing model may not reflect actual water, wastewater generation. So, respecting that council reviews the practice and consider whether more accurate or equitable approach should be adopted. So, there's two, three, four, five, six, seven action items highlighted there, they basically all come back to the, the points that I have just reviewed. So, conduct a formal review of the water metering bylaw, including its financial, legal, and environmental implications. Provide a public report detailing the revenue generated, reserve fund allocations, and conservation outcomes. Clarify the legal basis for use of water billing as a revenue generating mechanism under provincial law. Reassess the fairness and sustainability of the current billing structure, particularly for primary residences not engaged in commercial activity. Amend bylaw to require contractual consent for entry into private residences for water meter servicing. Consider a household water exemption of twelve hundred and fifty cubic meters a year for primary residences. And review the wastewater billing model to ensure it reflects actual water usage and does not unfairly penalize outdoor water use.
Comments, discussion? Councillor Kettles?
Just refer back to administration, this is extensive document. Given the, the number of action items and so on, is there any one or two things that stand out that, that we need to take some short-term review on? Or, or is this more of a, a general kind of overview of the bylaw and the state of the nation? In, in light of the fact that we're, you know, going to be doing some metering and some work like that, is there anything we need to deal with promptly?
I, I don't think there's anything that needs to be dealt with promptly, but I do think that we can address or attempt to address the questions and concerns, and have a report back to council and to the resident. We are actually doing a review of the bylaw. We happen to be doing a review of the bylaw right now, so, we can slot these concerns in with, with that review.
Discussion? Perfect. Thank you. Request for decision, Clarisom Skate Park Association grant application, Abe?
So, Skate Park Association is working on phase two of the skate park, they're looking to install a pump track, pardon me. And they would like to apply for the Community Foundation of Lethbridge and Southern Alberta Community Priorities Fund, applying for fifteen thousand towards the project. The project does have a, an estimated budget of two hundred and sixty thousand. Just an estimate at this point. But yeah, just looking for a letter of support from council to apply for that funding for phase two of the skate park pump track.
Questions, discussion? Councillor Ross, question?
Moved by councillor Ross to write a letter of support to the Community Foundation of Lethbridge and Southwestern Alberta for the Clarisom Skate Park Association's application for phase two of the park pump track, and manage the funds on their behalf.
All in favor? Approve?
Did I raise my hand for favor?
Approved. Tax exemption applications under copter, Abe?
So, now that we have a nice fresh bylaw, copter bylaw, we have some applications as well. So, historically, we've, we've had three, three community groups that have qualified under the copter legislation for the tax exemption, and they receive, when they qualify, they receive three-year exemptions. Those, those groups are the Curling Club, the Golf Club, and Prairie Winds Clubhouse, more commonly known as Sparta House, Prairie Winds Clubhouse Society. This year, we also have one for the Foothills Association space. They are applying as well. So, they have all submitted applications, administration has reviewed the applications, and they all qualify, and so, we are recommending that council approve the applications to those four community groups.
Questions, discussion? Councillor Meister?
I just, maybe you should let Mike go first. I'm just curious about the Inclusion's Foothills, because it's a rental, do they actually pay property, property taxes?
No, it, it is, sure.
It is a rental, so the property owner is the one who applied for copter of the facility because the lease is for Inclusion Foothills. And it's just for the bay that they're renting, it's not for the rest of the, rest of the building.
Thank you.
Councillor Zimmer?
I'd like to apologize for being daft on that part. What is Inclusion Foothills Association?
They work to be inclusive and help people, challenge people, fit more into societies, yeah.
They come from High River and Okatoks, they provide services within the local organization.
Oh, okay.
And provide services.
No, that's fine, I just want to know what it was.
Um, we, they're, they're the ones who brought the correspondence out recently about October as Disability Awareness Month.
Oh, okay.
Questions, discussion? Councillor Kettles?
Is there anything in the process that guarantees that the property owner passes the savings on to the association? Or, everybody gets along and we trust this process will work out as expected? That would have been my question as well.
I, I don't think they pass that on to the-
They can, but it's at their discretion.
It would be, I guess you would see that as a perk of hosting a nonprofit in your rental space. Potentially, if, if it's not passed on. Yeah, an incentive, there you go.
Any other questions? Discussion? Councillor Cutler?
Let's exempt the Curling Club. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, I'm not trying to control your meeting, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to elaborate just a little bit on the copter portion too. So, for the Curling Club and the golf course in particular, there's a portion that is non-exempt because it's licensed and such. So, this would just apply to whatever portion of the assessment is deemed to fit under copter.
I move to exempt the Curling Club under their exemptions.
Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to accept the application and exempt the taxes for the Clarisom Curling Club for three years, from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Approved. Councillor Kettles?
I'd like to move to exempt the Clarisom Golf Club for three years, from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight, the portion that is except, allowed through copter.
Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to accept the application and exempt the taxes for the Clarisom Golf Club for three years, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Approved.
I'll move to accept the application to exempt the taxes for the Prairie Winds Clubhouse Society from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight.
Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to accept the application and exempt the taxes for the Prairie Winds Clubhouse Society for three years, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight.
All in favor? Approved. Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to accept the application and exempt the taxes for Inclusion Foothills Association space, probably, only for three years, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight, the rent a space only.
All in favor? Approved. Oh, councillor Kettles?
I'm gonna ask the question that if one of these organizations decided to move from their existing location somewhere between twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight, does council have the ability- from their existing location somewhere between 2026 and 2028, does council have the ability now to go back and review that after we've approved the exemption for three years?
So the assessor will identify that, and then this application will no longer apply if they give the information, so they have to reapply.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on. Six point three, counselor orientation. Abe?
So counselor orientation has been a requirement in the MGA for several years. Recent legislative changes have placed new timelines on the orientation requirements. Previously, councils were allotted 90 days to receive their orientation, but now the orientation must occur either prior to the first, prior to the organizational meeting or prior to the first council meeting. Those requirements are split up into two different timelines. So that really our regular meeting schedule. Council would normally hold its organizational meeting, its first council meeting after the election on, this year it'll be on the 27th. We don't have counselor orientation until the 30th, and so we're outside of, we're outside of the legislation there. So what we're suggesting is that we cancel the October 27th meeting and reschedule it for November 3rd. This will allow us to get the orientation in on the 30th of October, prior to the first meeting, and we'll also do it prior to the organizational meeting as well. So we are looking for a resolution to extend the time for some of the training by up to 90 days. Again, it's broken down into two pieces, so if we get that motion as well, that gives us 90 days to get the other orientation in, and we will be in compliance if we get those motions from council. One other thing for consideration would be whether or not council wants to cancel the November 10th meeting if we reschedule the October 27th meeting to November 3rd, just because they're a week apart, and administratively, we don't feel that would be necessary to have both of those meetings. Yeah, that is a typo.
Sure.
Yep.
Questions, concerns?
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Motion to reschedule October 27th council meeting to November 3rd. Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to reschedule the Monday, October 27th, 2025 regular council meeting to Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
All in favor? Approved. Second motion. Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to extend the time for counselor orientation training under section 201-11B of the Municipal Government Act by 90 days.
All in favor? Approved. Third reading. Cancel the November 19th.
10th.
10th. Right, typo.
It's a typo.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Ross makes that motion. Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to cancel the Monday, November 10th, 2025 regular council meeting.
All in favor? Approved. Six point four. Grant application. Travel Alberta Event and Festival. Abe?
So Travel Alberta has announced a grant opportunity focused on growing existing festivals and events and supporting the development of new multi-day experiences that drive overnight visitation and regional tourism growth. Eligible events can receive between $25,000 and $150,000 with applicants required to contribute at least 25% of total event costs. The final contribution from Travel Alberta will be determined on application. Funding priorities include events and festivals held between April 1st, 2026, March 31st, 2027. Events are, sorry, events that encourage overnight stays and work towards becoming annual signature events are, will receive priority. Events must charge admission and demonstrate long-term sustainability and community benefit. So our Economic Development Department has been working with a tourism consultant, and this is one of the recommendations or suggestions coming out of that consulting was to apply for this grant with Travel Alberta and potentially doing a Clarisom Fair Days, applying for this grant and enhancing the Clarisom Fair Days. So the proposal is to build on, again, on the existing success of Fair Days by extending it into a two-day music festival. So the existing Fair Days schedule activities such as a street market, kids events, races, and community fun, they would continue as usual. However, the main entertainment portion would shift to Amundson, feature live music performance Friday from noon to 10:00, and then continuing Saturday after the parade in the evening. So this portion of the event, if we're applying for the grant, and that's the intention, would be an admission-based music festival in order to meet the eligibility requirements for the grant. Of course, food trucks, beer gardens, et cetera. So kind of what that looks like in terms of admission, we don't know how we would structure that yet. Got some ideas on here, but we don't know what that'd look like and if we would charge, reduce rates for locals. But the idea here is to really to bring people from out of town, spend more than one, or spend at least a night here, attend the festival over a couple of days, spend money in the restaurants and the hotels and in the town shops and businesses. So currently, Fair Days invest approximately $7,000 to $9,000 in musical entertainment. The expanded two-day format featuring approximately six bands per day would increase, obviously increase those costs significantly. However, we believe that through ticket sales and grant funds, we'd be able to offset a fair bit of that. So the deadline, there's a typo here as well, the deadline to apply for the grant is October 20th, 2025. A notification of the grant success, if we're successful, won't be till February 2026. So we've got a few options for council to consider here. Councils in favor, if successful in receiving the tourism grant, we could expand Fair Days into a two-day music festival, featuring larger headliners, professional staging, and enhanced marketing. We would promote Clarisom as a destination community, drawing visits from across Southern Alberta, and just promoting the town as a destination. If the grant is not approved, we could move forward with a smaller-scale music festival, integrate into Fair Days, using adjusted budget allocations, so this would feature local or smaller touring acts, keeping costs more manageable. Still need to add additional funds to the Fair Days budget, though. And then, of course, we could just maintain the current Fair Days format. So thoughts, comments, questions on that?
Counselor Cutler?
Good evening, folks. This year's Fair Days was probably one of the best Fair Days I've been to in a long time. Heard a lot of positive feedback in regards to a lot of activities. Got a lot of feedback about the abundance of activities and everybody trying to get to all the activities around town. We are a small community. I think our Fair Days and our events have expanded drastically over the last couple of years, which is fantastic. I will personally go on record and say I think we need to keep that in check in regards to how much we bring at a time. One of the big things I heard is everything's free in Clarisom, right? So it's a Fair Day. I don't know if you're going to get a lot of people buying tickets to go to a Trevor Panziak concert or a local artist concert in town. I just caution on the side of being hesitant to blow it up so quickly, but I can see the futuristic thinking, but we are a small town and everybody's so busy with rodeos and with everything else that goes on that week, I just don't know. We're built to host a two-day, six-band concert. That's my only, I'd love to see it. I just don't think it's, and then reading in here, it's a grant that we have to 25% match or something, so if we get a $50,000 grant, that's $15,000 that we have to put back into that budget, that we weren't really ready to put that much money into that budget to begin with. So I see the dream, the idea, but I do hesitate on the small-town aspect of it, and I will just go on record saying that dreaming big is big, but sometimes we just have to keep ourselves in check and see what we, we have great things now, so slow and steady is my recommendation.
I was going to express some of the same concerns that Mike has, and also we don't have the availability of hoteling everybody who does stay in our region for the night. And I do think the location of having a music festival in Amundson Park might be against making money. You just stand outside the park, you could hear the music, so I have a couple of issues as well. But yeah, I think our Fair Days are wonderful the way they are, and so many people get involved from the community to make it successful, and I think it's wonderful the way it is.
Counselor Carlson?
So this actually came a little bit from what the folks for the planning committee had already discussed, and I kind of added on to it as far as what it was like when I moved back here in '92, '93, way back when. And I remember there being a paid-for concert. Southern Country Hootenanny. Southern Country Hootenanny, and some decent-sized acts, and I remember how involved the community was for that, for that time period. I do caution running it at the same time as Fair Days. I personally would like to see it as a separate event, but something in the same vein, I think is awesome. I went so far as to reach out to a concert promoter and event coordinator who got quite excited about the chance to help out on something like that, and some folks that are involved in the Tabor Corn Fest and the event that they put on down there with the increase in the local camping especially, and the money that's spent within the community. So I would definitely encourage it. I'm challenged on the thought pattern of combining it with Fair Days, but I do think that this is, I think they should shoot further fences with it.
Counselor Zimmer?
Round one.
Oh, I did have my mic on, didn't I? I was just going to ask, was there like an expressed interest by a group of people that said, you know what, we'd like to see a music festival, or is this just a, we're adding something to our resume kind of thing?
Just adding something. Our Economic Development staff have been working with a tourism consultant, and they kind of aligned, the consultant aligned our staff with this opportunity. And so the opportunity to have a multi-day event that brings people to the community, kind of thought we could tack that on to the Fair Days schedule.
Then I kind of agree with both Mike and Keith a little bit.
Wait, I'll win you over in a second.
Who said I was done?
Cutler.
I did.
I agree. Southern Country Hootenanny was a fantastic Shenandoah. Seen a lot of big bands back in the day, put on by the Kinsmen and Alliance organizations. I do not think this should be coming out of taxpayers' money to promote. If you've got a promoter who wants to put on a three-day event, that's fantastic. You've got a group organizations, or you get a collaboration of groups, this is just a tough sell for people who already raised their taxes, tightened up, and now we're going to spend another 20 grand on a concert. So that's my only concern.
And with that, I'm comfortable with the fact that the revenue generation from it offsets the initial investment money from the town, and I could see it as an actual profitable split between the service organizations and the Economic Development Office as to money being put back into the town, more than anything. It would be, I don't think you can put this sort of thing on without the involvement of the Kinsmen and the Lions Club. It has to be a service-based, based group, but to help get that seed money started with the grant, I think is the big question here, is do we, do we go forward and try to get money from a grant because the grant's not based on trying to put that money out every year? It's seed money to get these sorts of events going that bring money back into the community. And that's why I would ask that we move forward with the intent, and that way we can involve those service groups and get that collaboration going.
Counselor Kettles?
I'll just throw in that I thought we had a fantastic Fair Days this year. It was big, it was busy. Adding on to it, I worry about just tapping, you know, there's so many people that do these things, and there's, they only have so much, you know, time to do it, so I worry about adding more onto that schedule. As far as the, having it to have a cost to attend, I'm just wondering, just back in the day, I remember whether there was some sort of a Clarisom bucks or something that you could get if you visited local businesses, they could, they could provide you with some Clarisom dollars, so kind of some synergy maybe with the Chamber of Commerce or something, and local people visiting could get some dollars that they could maybe use towards going to a concert like this or something, I don't know, just a, just a way to make it so that the folks that are local get a bit of a discount somehow, and then it's on the back. But I mean, that's step 17 of 20, so, but I would worry about, I worry about adding it on to an already pretty busy.
But you said we could take it away from Fair Days.
I think it's a smart idea to have a separate.
Does it mean the grant requirements, if we take it away from Fair Days?
Yes.
Because it's creating a new event? I like that idea. Like I could get behind, like, you know.
I like the idea of the both. I just don't think on Fair Days, but.
Yeah, and I guess then you're back to kind of capacity questions and concerns, and what kind of community group contributions you're getting to, right? So you're getting a little bit of bang for your buck when you combine it with Fair Days because you're already having to mobilize a bunch of stuff for that. If you move it away, what kind of involvement do you have from other community groups to help out with that?
I think you submit the grant application. Sorry. I think you submit the grant application, and you get together with your service groups and sell this as a, as a two-day, two-day invitation to both bring people to town, bring money to the service groups, and turn this into a profit-generating situation. I see it as, as, if it's combined with Fair Days and in Amundson, we're kind of cutting ourselves short of what the potential could be. we're kind of cutting ourselves short of what the potential could be. I see the ability to utilize those service groups and turn this into a situation of bringing hundreds of people to town for a decent main act as something worthwhile. And I'm glad you brought up the name because the Hootenanny was...
Southern Country Hootenanny, man.
Was completely gone. But that does bring that opportunity where you end up with something like a potential rodeo going alongside of it. But yeah, I can see it as a revenue generator versus a cost.
And just to speak on that question about mobilization, I think you're... I believe you're going to get more buy-in because all the other groups are already busy on Fair Days, running different beer gardens, running different things. I think if you had it on a different weekend, you're still going to get the same buy-in from even more groups because of availability from that weekend, is my experience.
Counselor Meister.
Maybe the weekend after the high school rodeo would be a good weekend to wrap that up.
What month is that?
June.
Let's see if we get the money first. I mean, I like the idea. I just think there needs to be some tweaking and some...
Counselor Zimmer.
Is this a new grant? Like, has it been around? Can you get it in continual years? Or is this one of those, you get it this year, then you've got to wait? Just because your first year of everything is always your trial year, right? So I mean, you can't really judge something on one year. You'd like to give it a good shot.
Yeah, and my understanding is that it's not intended to be a year-after-year grant. It is something to stimulate it, to be self-sufficient.
And then if your groups make money after that, hopefully they put that money into the next year. And they build it up and you have that.
So what I would suggest is, yeah, do it. Submit the grant. Worst-case scenario, you don't have buy-in by the time the grant comes. And I know we've got to worry about booking some acts and so on and so forth, which could lead to some penalties if it didn't look like it was...we had the ability to fully develop it. But I think you've even done right. This could be something that can turn a profit without the grant. And the grant money becomes a bonus to seed something for future years. But I don't think you need to know exactly on the days and the hows, just the expressed interest. Yeah?
And then there needs to be a commitment for the 25% funding as well, I guess, right? So in what was presented here, there was eight or so thousand dollars from the Fair Days budget that would have been allocated to that. So we would have had to find probably an extra few thousand. So we would just need to make sure that we're budgeting to find all of that 25% come budget time.
I think if we can find $20,000 to potentially help tear down a business downtown that's no longer active, we can find $20,000 to try to inject into a positive experience for the community. So I don't think there's an issue finding 20 grand to make that happen. And I'd make that motion.
Finding 20,000...
Oh, look, it's right here.
Is a little...yeah. Well, so I'm just trying to give council some fuller information because we're pivoting from the decision that was before you, okay? So the demolition funding proposed to come out of an existing reserve account, this would be taxation that we'll find at...taxation council will have to find at budget time.
Counselor Kettles.
Your point is well-taken, sir. But, you know, that seven or eight thousand dollars that is budgeted at Fair Days, I'm sure they make good use of it. And by directing it to a festival, I wouldn't want to be in a position where we're taking away from something else. So I'm kind of sitting with the group that would like it on a different day. And if we have to...let's face it, if for some reason we were successful with the grant and we just weren't in a position to deal with it because we couldn't get a sponsor, we couldn't get bands, we couldn't get community groups on board, we could say no to the grant.
No other questions, comments?
I have no questions.
I think the motion is to apply for the Travel Alberta Event and Festival Program.
So we don't have the first one?
No.
You don't have what?
Okay, so in the RP, there's two, like basically there's a motion, the first motion to proceed and then second motion to apply. So I just need to know what you guys want to do.
I think the motion is to apply.
So I think we make the motion to apply. I think we make the motion to proceed with the town event.
We don't need a Fair Days motion. That first one doesn't matter. Fair Days is staying status quo, so we leave that one alone. We just need a motion to apply for this Travel Alberta Event and Festival Program. That's it.
Cool.
And then funding, we'll have to figure out another time. The motion right now is just to apply.
With the goal that the funding or the function actually turns into a net zero or profit-making situation in the first place.
Well, don't worry. The idea's been tossed out several times to different service groups. It's just that collaboration. Sit up and down and doing it. It would work. I think this is very...
Awesome.
Yep. Yeah, we need that in the motion.
You just got to find a venue.
Community center.
No, outdoors.
A brand-new mothet field.
Listen, we invest money into our park and recreation. We don't need to start chappel-ing down people and icebergs and tire trucks.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to apply to the Travel Alberta Event and Festival Program and to provide the matching funds.
All in favor? Approved. 6.5 Communications and Engagement Strategy. Abe?
So we have a draft communications and engagement strategy on the agenda for council's consideration because we are at the end of council's term. We are recommending that council directs administration to forward this to the next council for its consideration. But this was one of council's priorities for the term was to review the communications and engagement processes at the town. And so again, we have a draft strategy for you. We also have a communications and engagement assessment, which informs the strategy. But a broad overview of the strategy. Key objectives include supporting council's strategic plan, promoting engagement and communications to create an environment where town processes and policies and council decisions are transparent and accessible, promote economic and community development, highlight business incentives, tourism and local events, sound governance, ensure transparency and accessibility of council decisions, community engagement, strengthen relationships with residents and service groups, promote wellness, recreation, and inclusion. And of course, these objectives can be modified and changed a little bit depending on the new council. There are also listed target audiences, key messages, communication channels, engagement tactics, and evaluation and metrics. And of course, then referring to the communications and engagement assessment provides an overview and categorizes the communication processes at the town, provides recommendations for improvement, and also options for new initiatives. So some key recommendations from the communications and engagement assessment include reviewing and updating key communications policies such as a public participation policy, social media policy, streaming and recording council meetings, electronic community sign usage, delegation to council, and the council youth representatives. Those policies haven't been reviewed in several years, so recommending that those get reviewed. New initiatives that we're recommending in the assessment is posting council committee agendas to the website, compiling a more comprehensive annual report. Currently, we do about a two-page annual report every year. However, we could do a more comprehensive report that includes messages from the mayor, messages, more detailed information on the operations and the different departments. And of course, the financial statements often accompany with a municipal annual report. The financial statements would accompany that as well. So that comes at a cost of about $2,000 per year. That's really for the design and the layout of the annual report. We don't have that capacity in-house to do that, so we would have to hire someone to help us with that. And also recommending conducting a communication engagement survey once every council term to inform the strategy. The assessment also contains information on new and in-progress initiatives undertaken by staff and council during this term. 60-day news scoop was a response to the community survey that we issued. Escrib Agenda Software, council and town administration-driven. Council Highlights, response to the community service. Coffee with Council, public and council-driven. Website update. The town was successful with a SCOP grant, which will fund the website updates. But I guess a little bit more on the communications and engagement assessment. The goal is to document all of our communications engagement policies and processes that we have, provide an overview of what they do, and provide recommendations for approval. They're also classified based on whether or not they're legislative-required communications processes, whether they're information sharing, information gathering, and how involved and collaborative they are with community members. By and large, most of our communications and engagement processes fall into legislative-required communications processes, information sharing, and information gathering. And really, it's the first two that they fall under. Most of our processes is either legislative-required communications processes or information sharing. So there's a brief description of those processes. And again, documenting our communications tools under each of those classifications with recommendations for improvement or for changes. And then lastly, there's one more piece of this, which is the communications and engagement survey that we conducted last year. So the results of that are on there.
Questions, discussion? Counselor Kettles.
This is all kind of largish.
Yep.
Hate to be that guy, but this may be work for the next council.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for tonight is just for direction to forward it to the next council. It is your last meeting tonight, so.
I really liked those council highlights when they were put up. And it made it so simple for people to know what was going on in the meetings and everything. So that was a great highlight.
I'll motion. Oh, sorry.
I just have one more comment about the annual report. I mean, I harken back to the days with those beautiful oil and gas annual reports with great big pictures in that thick. And at the end of the day, you just flip to the financials if you were interested in it. I would caution, unless administration is hearing a hue and cry, that we need more detail, more something. I would caution, my opinion, that maybe less is more around that unless we're hearing something else. The $2,000 to designer, whatever, right? But I also worry about taking up more of your administrative time to, you know, make all those pretty pictures and do all the things and grab those charts and make them accurate and proof and all that kind of stuff. So that would be my only comment there.
I'll make the motion to direct administration to bring the draft communications engagement strategy forward to the new council.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to direct administration to bring the draft communications and engagement strategy forward to the new council for its consideration and integration with the strategic plan.
All in favor? Approved. 6.1 Financial Report. Jennifer.
Good evening. So I have your two August 31 financials. I had mentioned at the last meeting where we did the capital update, hoping to have September. But just as the timing of this meeting and month-end entries and all of that, I'm giving you August since we didn't review that at the last meeting. I've highlighted a few notes on the first page, which is the income statement by function. But if you have any questions on the other departments, you can certainly ask. So item one I always highlight with the taxes and requisitions, primarily because it's the biggest line item regarding revenues. So this is with our taxes-leaved tax penalties and requisitions collected to date and interest earned. Additionally, any of the requisitions portions that we collected come out of this as well once the province and the seniors lodge request those. So we have paid the seniors lodge requisition in full of just over $210,000 for the year. As of August, there was only two quarterly requisitions taken by the province, but the September 30 one has since come out. It was an adjusted amount based on the equalized assessment that was completed. So it jumped from $362,000 to $526,000 for that quarterly payment. But it's an adjustment for the previous three quarters in total. So our next one, well, the December one will go back down to what it should be. So but those dollars have been collected through the assessment. They just adjust later because their budget year and ours don't always align. So that's why that is. As well, I see I kept a line item in here and I apologize. We've collected between bank and investment interest earned to date is just over $316,000. As I mentioned at previous meetings, there was an investment that came due and we took the interest on that and renewed the principal. So that's why it's a little bit high right now. And franchise fees received as of August 31 are just over $288,000. So that makes up that line item and that's why it's showing to be 117% of the year. But again, with those further requisition payments coming in, that will be reduced significantly. Under general administrative revenues, which is the next one I highlighted, so this consists of sales of tax certificates, business licensing, building rental fees, administrative charges, as well as proceeds for any sale of town-owned property. So that is why the revenues here are appearing higher than budget. If we were to take out those proceeds of sales of property, which will be transferred to the Land and Development Reserve as part of the year-end process, it's at about 80% of the total revenue budget anticipated. Fire services revenues, I mentioned here. It is looking a little bit low if you're looking at the percentage for this time of year. However, as council's aware, call revenues are unpredictable. They're emergency-based, so you know, don't want to always see it higher, I suppose. But today, the department has received about 55% of its fire call budget. Additionally, the MD of Villa Creek's contribution of $9,000 isn't received until the end of the year. And that's approximately 26% of the total. So that'll bring that up as well once we get their contribution. Parks and Recreation revenues are in a good position. So we're moving into the winter season. Obviously, we're going to see that increase with winter activities. Our campground revenues as of August 31, so we did keep the campground open up until early October here, is just over $71,000 as of August 31. Aquatic revenues are above budget as well, sitting around 93% of the total aquatics budget. This is high. There's been additional programming and different initiatives that have taken place there. So that is why we're seeing an increase there. Down below, I do mention that... Down below, I do mention that the expenses are also up in that area, so they're helping to offset the additional costs that we're seeing. It will offset some of it, probably not all of it. And again, with the winter season and ice rentals and such coming on, we'll see the arena portion go up as well. Moving into expenditures, I do have a couple of schedules there at the end where I highlighted, so I'll skip over those for now. But moving into expenditures, the wastewater treatment expenditure budget is looking low. However, there's some large chemical purchases that are taking place in the upcoming months, so it'll be a big jump once those chemical purchases, they're kind of done in lump sums, so it's kind of a lull and then you'll see that jump when those purchases take place. And again, for expenditures, as I already mentioned, with the parks and recreation, so it's not looking too bad at this time, but again, I do anticipate that the aquatics department will be slightly over budget due to wages supplies and a few of the additional programmings that have taken place. But again, we'll see some of that offset from the revenues earned. And then there'll be other increases related to the arena and the ice surface as that is utilized. And just a note, kind of as we move into the last quarter of the year, I will say that overall revenues and expenditures are in a pretty good position for the town. While some of the departments, as I mentioned, may be appearing short in revenues or over in some expenses, there is still some year-end entries to take place. There's some revenues that we're still anticipating. And obviously, as in previous years, administration will present any surpluses or deficits after year ends completed. And then just moving on to the income statement by object, unless anyone has questions on that first report. I've highlighted a lot of the same areas here. I'll just make note of some specifics with regards to some franchise fee payments we've received. So of that 288 I mentioned earlier, $130,971 from Atco and $157,276 from Fordis has been received. We have received the LGFF operating grant of $72,800, so this comes in and it's for general operating costs associated with the town. FCSS provincial funding, we have three of the four quarterly payments have been received as of this report. And the SILP grant and the NRED grant for the website were both approved. However, funds for the website have yet to be received. Penalties and costs, I mentioned kind of earlier, so this would include some of the penalties related to taxes and utilities. I think on the previous page I mentioned that we've received around $35,000, I think, in, yeah, $35,974 in tax penalties to date. And then utility penalties are just based on, obviously, anything that is outstanding at 2.5% of what's outstanding, or 1.5%, pardon me. Number five, I've just highlighted other external funding for capital because it is showing a really high percentage of 153%. I just want to note that this includes costs for departments related to utilities such as streetlights, materials and supplies such as computers, software, hardware, fuel, vehicle, equipment and machine parts, water and wastewater chemicals. So it really encompasses a lot of the supplies and requirements to operate the town, including the aquatic center, the arena, the museum. This is just summarizing it by type rather than department. So it does look high in a sense, but that's what that covers. And then other expenditures noted here in the public relations events funds. So this includes a taxi token program, the physician recruitment and other tax-related cancellations. So this one is showing high because we did this year adopt the volunteer firefighter tax incentive which was budgeted as well as the new development tax incentive which council did approve one of those, so that's why that is showing higher than the budget. And I'll just move on to the schedules. So the first schedule one, I focused on the common and equipment pool function. So this is primarily public works related. The revenues in this department are from equipment rentals plus labor and the sale of goods and materials such as scrap metal or asphalt sales, those kinds of things. Or sorry, I think asphalt's in the roads, pardon me, scrap metal. Under the expenses, salaries, wages and benefits, so these are well within the budgeted costs for this time of year and it will get utilized as we move on through the rest of the year. Contract and general services are looking a little under, but we do have our fall and winter maintenance and different activities related to contracted costs coming in, so this will pick up over the next little bit here. This budget also includes equipment insurance which has been paid in full for the year. Similar to the previous line, the materials, goods and supplies budget also appears slightly low for this time of year, but we do have fall/winter work coming and that's going to ramp up pretty quick especially with winterizing equipment from the summer months and preparing for the winter and colder months, so that'll increase. And then the final one there, just internal transfers, there's no budget there, but that line item shouldn't be there, number five, so I apologize. Typo. And lastly, Schedule Two. So this is road, street, walks and lighting. So this is the other revenue that's related to the sale of things like crushed asphalt and some contracted work for street sweeping that the town of Clarus Home does for Staveley and Granum, the MD of Willow Creek and Granum. Again, similar to the common equipment budget, salaries, wages and benefits for this department are, you know, within the budget and they'll also get utilized as we move through the balance of the year. The contract and general services, this one is appearing very low. It's only showing 1% of the $154,000 budget being used. This is budgeted for the sidewalk and curb repairs, so those have just finalized as of the end of this August 31st report. We've since received those invoices and that budget on the next report will be met. So it won't be at 1%, it'll be up there. So that work has been completed and we did receive the contracted invoice, so that's, I just wanted to highlight that because it does look out of line, but that's the reasoning behind it. And lastly, for materials, goods and supplies, this is a large budget as well. This includes the street lighting and utility costs throughout the town. So as you can imagine, street lighting in the town, that's a large cost. There's also materials for street lanes and boulevard work that comes out of there. And then we'll see some additional purchases for winter materials. And that's the August 31st financial report. And if you have any questions or if there's any area you wanted me to highlight, I can definitely answer questions for you.
Discussion? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and best of luck to you all.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Tell Me Clarus Home income statement for August 31st. Consolidated income statement.
Question?
Moved by Councilor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended August 31st, 2025 as presented.
All in favor? Information Brief. Friday Public Skates Sponsors. Abe?
So we just have an information brief about the Friday Public Skates sponsors. We have found some sponsors for those. 1:30 to 4:00 p.m., Friday Public Skates running weekly through the season from September 19th to March 20th, '26. Staveley Elks, the Clarus Home Lions Club and the Clarus Home District FCSS have each sponsored these skates. So just wanted to shout out those groups and let them know we appreciate their sponsorship and invite the town out to the Public Skates.
Thank you. Application to HGTV Hometown Takeover. Abe?
So just promoting the application to HGTV as a hometown takeover and we are going to be applying for that. Basically, the Hometown Takeover is the first Canadian version of the series from the U.S. Hometown Takeover hosted by Ben and Aaron Napier. A series will focus on revitalizing one selected small town in Canada, highlighting its people, culture and community spirit. And so the goal is to spark nationwide small-town revitalization movement to help one community overcome challenges through beautification, restoration and renew pride. So it's open to Canadian towns with a population of 20,000 or fewer. And so submissions will include photos and videos showcasing the areas of the town most in need of improvement, main streets, public spaces, community gathering places, for example. So the project aims to celebrate the resilience and heart of small towns across Canada. And there's a bit of information and some links there for people to share the input about the community to help shape Clarus Home submission. You can fill out your feedback at the link. And there's also links to how other small towns have transformed through this program as well. So no cost to apply. Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and submit to that, just trying to promote that a little bit and get some airplay for it.
Councilor Meister?
Did I see on Facebook today that they're recording our video this Saturday in Amitsin Park? Is that correct?
I don't know the details. I know we're doing a video coming up soon. You might know better than I do, yeah.
I'll have to double-check Facebook.
Yeah.
6.8 Council Committee Report. Anything anybody wants to add?
Just, I just submitted a report. I just submitted it. And then I thought, well, I've had seven years of tradition, I didn't want to add, so.
Perfect. Council Resolution Status. Abe, anything new?
What do we got here? Nope.
What?
Oh. No, any questions on anything, council?
Apparently I skipped over one. Strategic Plan Update. Abe?
Yeah, this will be the last update for this council. So I've highlighted a few of these items, a few newer things that we haven't maybe reported on from the strategic plan, accomplishments of council. So the community center, that construction was complete April 2025 and the financial grant reporting, complete summer 2025. That is the accessibility portion and washroom's entrance to the community center. The Stormwater Phase Two is 100% complete. We had a holdover of some sidewalk and just a little bit of tiny work that had to get done. It was 95% complete coming into the new year and even into the spring. It is now complete. Under support the EDC, Economic Development Committee, two key emergent budgetary approvals in 2025 were the Sun Country radio advertising for $4,000 and the demolition policy. And then under Consider Residential Development in Tax Incentive Program. So we did have residential and non-residential tax incentive bylaws updated and reviewed Selling and developing town-owned land, the town has sold almost all of its, if not all of its residential properties. The two holdouts we had were the one at Westland that the town purchased for the stormwater upgrades. That was sold back in January, February, was it? And the Westland lots just recently sold, or sorry, Pine Place lots just recently sold as well. Explored diverse housing opportunities, so as we know, there have been two area structure plans approved. The Castle Area Structure Plan is currently going through administrative review and will be then on to the bylaw approval process, so that is happening right now. Continue work with landowners where area structure plans exist. So subdivision for the first few phases of evolution have been approved. Those are the highlights that I had, the updates and highlights. Obviously, there's been a lot more completed that I haven't touched on here. Is there anything else and any questions from council on that?
Only thing I wanted to say is after the number of years that we've been doing this, when you see it written down and you look at the number of man-hours that administration puts into this, hats off to everybody in the office. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Information Items. Any questions? Councilor Cutler, motion to approve information items. Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Motion to go in camera, Councilor Cutler. Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to go in camera at 8:47 p.m. for the following items. A, Local Public Body Confidences, ATIA Section 28.